Would you lead us in the place of the meeting?
I can't change the name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, equal to this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of you may notice out there that I'm a Vietnam American and that's something that he took off a long time ago because he won't recognize our service, but we want later everybody to know that we serve. Rule call.
Mayor Flores.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ed.
Here.
Councilmember DeBries.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
A foreigner president.
Thank you. Now we'll open the public comments. Comments are on the side of the room.
Valerie. Good evening. And forgive me if this has already been taken up by the city council before or within San Juan government. Considering the demonstrations that we've had this last week all over the country, I'm wondering if San Juan officials stance on protection for our immigrant population. And it was just a question, and like I say, I don't know if San Juan has a sanctuary-type consideration for its community. Maybe it's something to consider.
Yeah, just to follow up on what Valerie said, we had about 25 people in front of the Teatro Campanino on the sixth Friday. It was in solidarity with the national vigil that being held all over the country. Any other public comment?
John Utkosia.
Good evening, council and our new city manager and member and colleague. I just wanted to mention real quick something I noticed, I believe it was two weeks ago at the last car show. We usually have pretty good security at our shows. The car shows have, most of the car shows have clubs that do security and then of course Jason Williams has security and I haven't really seen a lot of problems of late. But the car show a couple of weeks ago, there appeared to be some problems. They were blocking streets that I don't think fire trucks could have gotten down. I don't know if the fire department went down there because I wasn't able to stick around for the car show. We didn't enter a car. We had another obligation that afternoon. I just walked around in the morning. But there appeared to be some problems and I don't know if that particular car club has any good security. So I just wanted to mention that as something to take a look at when you get your applications and to keep an eye on when these shows go on. Thank you.
Addict to that, the individual that's in charge of the car show made the statement to one of our business people that San Juan Batista belongs to them for the whole day.
I heard that comment. I was sitting there.
And I don't agree with that. This is our town.
Yeah, they said they rented the whole town.
Yeah, well, we can resolve that. Thank you. Thank you, Billy. Anyone else?
I have another card.
Okay, the consent items, all matters listed under the consent agenda can be enacted by one motion authorized an access indicated to those items so designated. There'll be no separate discussion. Can anybody hear me?
You need the microphone for the recording.
Could you record it?
Yes.
See, when you're in a showcase, you don't do this by yourself. You've got grips. Because the unit doesn't allow the actor.
Can we get a public work grip person?
Okay. There'll be no separate discussions on these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. A, approve affidavit or posting agenda. Well, this will be all in one motion, right? Approve affidavit or posting public hearing notice, the cannabis item. Approve affidavit or posting public hearing notice, the Meritage Development Agreement item. D, approve minutes for September 18th, 2018, regular meeting. E, approve minutes for April 16th, 2019, regular meeting. F, approve minutes for April 30th, 2019, special meeting. G, approve resolution for street closures, which includes Arts and Crafts Festival, Ritz Cookoff, Chicken Festival, and Car Show. H, adopt ordinance 2903, amended section 2-8-050, increasing solicitation thresholds in accordance with the new thresholds set by the state relative to the bid process, the second reading, and waived reading ordinances and resolutions of tonight's agenda beyond title.
I have a question.
I have a question.
On number, I have questions for C.
C?
So do we?
You pull it.
Pull it?
Yeah, we pull it. And we discuss it.
We don't have to pull it. We just have three questions.
What's the question?
We just want to ask staff something. Well, actually, I think my questions are for you. And it has to be, now, this is where we're talking about the square footage of the building agreement and the building permits and the, and so what I was wondering is, what size are the remaining lots?
So this is just for the notice item? And we're actually, we have it on the agenda later on today for approval of the ordinance.
Just five days.
Okay, so then my questions that I can, I can wait for my questions until then? Okay.
This is just for the notice. Okay.
I have questions.
Yes, sir.
On 3G, street closures. The Arts and Crafts Festival doesn't have a year on it.
Well, if you look at the dates.
It doesn't have a year on it.
I know, but it's March.
That's all I'm saying.
March is already gone.
Doesn't have dates.
Yeah.
And I have one other question for Todd, if that's possible, about this. We went through this checkoff list that will be completed for all of these that are listed on here. With them.
Yes, I will.
So the first process would be for street closures for us and we either approve them all or don't approve them and then everybody else starts signing off on them as well?
That's correct. If I understood your question correctly, I see right here Arts and Crafts Festival and the Car Show, those two events that we had our meeting with, my review meeting back on July 3rd.
Right, 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 right.
And so far, I do have the Chicken Festival, it's on my desk, and I have it scheduled to be reviewed by my next meeting, which will be on August 1st. So far, I have not received an application from the cookoff.
It came in, and this one, that's the Arts and Crafts Festival, that's actually Jason Williams' next year, not the Antique Fair in August. So that would be something else. Okay, cool.
Okay, yeah, so actually, you know what? Let me take that back. Because I, actually, let me just kind of retract some of my statement here. Item 3G, I actually didn't have a chance to look at what was in the staff reports and all that with that. So anyway, but the Car Show, I'm going to say that was the one that's going to be held in October.
Right. Okay.
But the Chicken Festival, I do have that application on my desk.
Okay.
I have that as a one set.
Okay, so everybody from now moving forward is going through the same process?
Right.
Where we're requiring everything, signatures before their event can?
That's the way I'm stepping up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right there with my review.
Yeah, there's another item on one of the applications they put down, they will set up traditional, what traditional way is it up? What's traditional? Who set it up? I mean, if they're supposed to put down where they're going to, how they're going to set up the booths? And they didn't?
Right, there were no site maps associated with any of these applications.
Yeah, the one that I'm talking about, the Chicken Festival, says we do a traditional setup.
Yeah.
It is traditional.
He talks about side street closures and I was wondering the same thing.
It just says side street closure, doesn't say.
We can ask that question to him.
It's got to be specified.
Yeah.
So do you typically get maps with these?
They come as, it was with the application. They come with them, you know, depending on the, you know, depending on the project. But, you know, we do have a kind of a street map type image in our application packet.
Yes.
Some of those come, but, you know, sometimes folks might draw them up, sometimes they might not. But we could start requiring them actually.
Can we require those for city council meetings if we're going to approve street closures, please?
I'll do that.
Thank you very much, thank you.
That's the maps.
I'm good.
Okay, everybody's good, then the chair will send a motion to accept consent items. Submit it.
I'll make a motion to accept all matters listed under the consent agenda and be enacted in by one motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, attention, motion carries. On the presentational items, we did have a legislative update on, from State Assembly Rivas, but he, his schedule got changed. So we'll go to presentation on plastics by our council member DeBries. Are you ready, sir?
I wish, Don, do you have that video?
We did, and also in your package, there's some agreement, that's the command bag. So the issues you raised and biopacks and the growing concerns, right problems of the plastic and also the recycling crisis in our midst of China, no longer cooking, recyclable. So the whole topic around recycling is that specifically around the plastic industry is changing. And I researched the league of California City's website and the official one sheet, somebody for you on the plastic. The state, of course, is looking at this as well. And at the bottom of this sheet is a, and a assembly bill and a tenant bill that are moving through the system right now, divided into by two complicated document that are going to the full legislature soon. But it talks about we're actually recycling only 75% of single-use plastic, the plastic products by 2030. And we have a video that comes from the previous president who was a common consumer. The public is concerned that.
It worked earlier.
And they might eat the plastic too, if we get a chance.
They eat everything else.
I know.
So, well, is this on? So, hello, hello?
So, hello, I'm Akita. I am passionate about, I'm passionate about the problem of plastics present, not only to our community, but to the world. And I've been a member of this organization for a long time, it's called Plastic Pollution Coalition. And this is really great, you know, and narrated by Jeff Bridger, who's also shows my passion. I just think it's needless. I think there's, when you hear the impact that plastic down upon our community and our world, you say, why? Why? I'm a volunteer, I'm a paper guy, so we can't, we're not.
Plastic water bottles, plastic straws, plastic cups, plastic wrap, plastic utensils, and plastic-to-go containers. Plastic is a substance the earth cannot digest. And every bit of plastic that has ever been created still exists. Every day in the United States, we throw out almost 88,000 tons of plastic. Now, what happens to plastic after you use it? Well, most of it goes into landfills, a portion gets into the water course and eventually ends up in the oceans. Recycling is not a sustainable solution. It's actually called downcycling because plastic never goes away. Consumption of disposable plastics has spiraled out of control. What is the number one thing plastic is made out of? Well, every year, we use 17 million barrels of oil to make plastic water bottles. This is enough to fuel 1 million cars every year. Plastic pieces on the ocean's surface now outnumber sea life 6 to 1. Plastic makes up almost 90% of all trash floating on the ocean's surface, 46,000 pieces of plastic per square mile. What effect does plastic have on human health? Plastic chemicals, like BPA, are absorbed by the body. Studies show that they alter hormones and disrupt the endocrine system. By refusing disposable plastic, you can improve the health of the ocean and the environment around us, including human health and animal health. Since 2009, Plastic Pollution Coalition has been building a global alliance to combat single-use disposable plastic. Our membership includes individuals, organizations, NGOs, businesses, campuses, and policymakers. We share resources, tools, and messaging with our coalition to develop a broad-based strategy to tackle the issue head-on. We're working with universities, businesses, festivals, musicians, and more to create replicable and sustainable approaches to eliminate single-use disposable plastic. Plastic pollution is a global problem that humans alone have caused. We can do something about it. Please, join our coalition. For more information, visit www.plasticpollutioncoalition.org. Remember, bring reusable items with you, like a water bottle, a cup, a bag, utensils. Refuse plastic when it's offered. And remember to say, no straw, please. Only purchase items in sustainable packaging, like glass and wax paper.
Thank you, Lord. So I first made this list to the council through the mayor a few months ago, and my idea, my concept is that San Juan, the city of San Juan, is just figuring it out in terms of this issue. I think it's a city and the community, and we're going to comment on what's going down with the state. It's not like the city of San Juan, it's a, any type of plastic ban, it's like a curable type of problem. But the good news is that we're so small in the city, we can act quickly and quickly and send a message and make a statement. And so in particular, what I would propose that the council consider is a ban on plastic bags at the grocery stores, at the grocery stores. Ban on plastic straws at our restaurants, the meat and snack shops. A ban on statherfums as a form of takeout area at our restaurant. And just the encouragement of use of paper products, but available, available paper products at all times. And then whatever else the council or others want to think, we add it on to that, but I thought that'd be a good consideration.
The actual, the packet that I included in the, in the packet that was sent out to all of us, actually came from the county of Santa Cruz. And they enacted a similar ban to what you are proposing, I think a year and a half ago. If you look, go to the very first page, it says, Ten Goncharoff Zero Waste Programs Manager, Santa Cruz County. And he's willing to come out to any jurisdiction in the tri-county area and talk to us about it anytime. They have gone through the steps of going to food service companies that sell to various restaurants, you know, the takeout containers, they now have the takeout containers in basically, I would call it cardboard, but, or paper, but, you know, they're compostable or biodegradable or whatever. They have almost everything that a restaurant needs to do a complete takeout process, they can now do it instead of in plastic or styrofoam, which are the real killers in this area. They can do it with paper. I asked him personally, I said, do these companies market it in just Santa Cruz County or will they come to San Juan? And he says, they go everywhere and it's in their catalogs now and it, you know, it's so they can do it. It's at a very similar price to the styrofoam. So, because I was worried, I, we're a town that survives on our tourism and to, or to a greater degree, some of our restaurants. And so I didn't want to, you know, impose a burden upon those, but, but I've been assured by Tim that it's really, he can really make it work. Or not he, but it will now really work.
Well, and my parting is, for example, I switched the paper straws.
Right.
People have noticed that. They did that all on their own, and you have different takeout partings. But the thing, let me just point to the gate and just share my passion here just for a second. The thing that struck me the most in that, you know, is that plastic is a substance that the earth cannot digest. Every piece of plastic ever manufactured is still on this planet today and will always be here. It'll make the animal bit smaller, but it doesn't go away. And you have to ask yourself, wow, is that true? Yeah, it is true. Well, then why? Why are plastic bags as opposed to paper bags that works just as well? Why? Why are plastic straws better than paper straws? Why? It makes zero sense to me, so I'm all in board with this and whoever else that's sharing my passion, I'd like to give a word with it.
One question. Do you know what the status is of Assembly Bill 1080 and Senate Bill 54?
No. Right. So I was, I was just looking at us before our meeting, mayor, and the Senate bill has gone through two committee meetings and the, and it's ready to be heard by the assembly. And the Senate bill, pardon, the Assembly bill has gone through two committee meetings and is ready to be heard by the assembly. And the Senate bill is catching up and before the first committee, the Senate bill. So we're about to do that, delighted.
Thank you. Any comments? Does the Senate have items?
Well, to continue the conversation, I think the really important thing is to, I'll use my own demonstration here, is to do away with this and replace it with something like this, which can be used literally thousands and thousands of times. This one actually has a built-in straw and so I don't have to worry about that.
Still plastic?
Yes, it is. It is plastic.
So we should be using the steel?
Steel or glass?
Yeah, but, but like I said, it's, it's, you know, it's usable over and over and over and over again. And it's, in my opinion, it's the single use that causes things to pile up. This is used once and it's recycled, you know. I was in that industry for quite some period of time. And part of the problem is it got very sloppy. They mixed paper and plastic together. Finally, finally, the mainland China revolted against that and cut us off. And we, at one time, 30 years ago, we had our own recycling facilities and that's long gone. We might have to resurrect that now, but that's a process that's going to be addressed in those bills and will take frankly quite some period of time. It's not going to be tomorrow.
So in order for us to have an ordinance in the town, do we need to wait to see what the outcome is of these bills or move forward?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah?
A lot of jurisdictions have ordinance, no set ban, straws, bags, and so, you know, if you bring that back to your community.
That'd be great.
In fact, Watsonville just passed theirs last month.
What I would, what I would say is that typically before these are passed, you might want to go to the Chamber of Commerce or have somebody from the city approach those businesses that might be impacted by this and see if that's something that they would be in agreement with, rather than have them come to the meeting and protest. So it might be, there might be a little, you know, that's something that the council or the city manager could do in the meantime to kind of open the door to these businesses accepting these bans.
One of my concerns.
Two questions here that I already do it.
Anacca's and parting?
Anacca's and Rabinet.
My only concern is that if, you know, if they go to this kind of container, I think they're a little bit more expensive than the plastic, but it is in the long run better that they're going to the paper. So if they protest, hopefully they'll accept it. But yeah, you know, I mean, I've been using reusable bags for years.
So, okay, we have, so keep for next meeting?
Well, in order to reach out to the community, I might ask for a few more weeks, if that's okay.
So you would like it for September on the agenda?
Yes, that gives me more time to reach out, Todd and I and others do.
Do we have any public comments on this? We invite you, if you have something to say, say it. No? Okay, no problem.
Hang on. Absolutely.
Yes.
Margot's packaging is edible.
I'm Margot Tankersley with Margot's Ice Cream Parlor. And tomorrow, there's actually a mixer at St. Francis Retreat. The green business people are going to be there. But we've officially become a green business.
Yay, congratulations.
And there's quite a few businesses in town that have become green and gotten certified. So it is already in the works. And these people with the green business, they will help find suppliers to.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they've helped me all along, getting straws, getting compostable spoons, changing out product, and, you know, going through the product that might not necessarily be green. But, yeah, using up what we have and moving on to what is eco-friendly.
Very good.
So that's tomorrow night.
That's the retreat.
I don't know if any of you have been in contact with the green people.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe getting ahold of them.
Yeah, I'll be there as well.
And they can give you more information for other businesses. I think the whole downtown area should become green.
We agree. We agree. Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're getting good response, you know.
Yeah. All right.
I saw Bob play, are you back there, Bob?
Oh, yeah, he's there.
At the same time, can I ask you a question or anything?
Ooh.
There was some mention made of the benefits of surveying the business community, are you still with the San Juan community or?
I am, I am.
You can pass something that you would, you know?
Possibly, yeah, I'm sure we could. Sure we could. Just a, you know, a side note, just my daughter, who used to be the city clerk, she moved to Arizona. She actually works for a company now called Footprint. And Footprint, their business is manufacturing products to replace plastic products.
Oh, nice.
So, so this is a movement, I think, throughout the country.
Yeah.
I've been telling a lot that I was having an activity and there was one in Houston today, and the president pulled out, pulled out, and there was a person, straw.
That's, that's, Footprint makes a paper, a paper straw. And they also, they, they're.
I'm currently getting Louis Vuitton straws too.
Their newest product is the plastic that goes around the beer six-packs.
Oh, right.
So they have a paper replacement for that.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
But Mr. City Manager, exciting to see him from here coming, it's an interesting to Louis Vuitton, and probably the biggest community.
Sure, and our, and our.
I'm going to put Margot in charge.
We'll follow up with the San Juan Batista committee.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
If it happens overnight, we'll come back sooner.
Okay.
There are no unsurmountable things here. We can be, we can take care of. All right. Move on to 4C, presentation of smoke testing in city sewer. Pat Conway, California Rural Water Association.
Mr. Conway, welcome to our fair community.
I'm glad to be here. Sure beats the heck out of 144.
Sure beats the heck out of a hundred and forty, so. Do you have any questions? Sure, I know what smoke testing sewer is all about. Pretty easy. Smoke testing, I'm from a different state, you know, so. I work for California Rural Water and with the Public Circuit, right? Work on wastewater side of the house. We have sixty-seven stalkers and we do everything with utilities you can never imagine. Help operators, managers, townspeople, get their stuff together and help you along the path to really good stuff. I've been doing it for, for four years, got lots of grades, lots of certifications. I had fun with this stuff. Been with the company for about twenty years and pretty well. It was. San Juan Batista was one of my first places when I started in ninety-seven. Went up to your sewer plant, got all your stuff going on out there, and about two nights or five, but still working.
We'll have to talk offline about that.
Okay. We do need help. Get us some...
So you'll need to, it's right here. So you'll need to take that, yeah, if you want, just long enough for you to take it over.
A wonderful resource. Pat, if you can leave us cards?
I got all this ready.
Yeah, you would.
All right. Hey, that one does this. Oh, Lord, I gotta find my presentation now. All right. And I, I got a presentation on the SD cardboard here, so you guys can have the whole thing.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, that's good. And let's go.
Which, can you back up to the light?
Oh, they just turned on.
The light. Oh, that's better.
What you see is a smoke testing machine, pretty much a very good strat agent with liquid panel on it, will blow air into the sewer line. With this unit, it puts liquid smoke around a small gauge, cover tubing, superheats this liquid smoke. It's food grade, doesn't affect you, safe for everything, safe for people in the house. If smoke should enter the house because they didn't follow the directions, I put one gallon of water down every drain trap and includes four drains, shower stalls, that haven't been used for ten years, this is where the smoke can come in. Wash all the toilets, that way you have your traps full of water. If you don't have a trap full of water, smoke will come in the house and that's when you have people that are trying to... We smoked out a church in session, there was a fire and brimstone, preacher and it went over pretty good, so we've had lots of stuff. So we usually do smoke testing before we PVE the line, so we can find out where the trouble spots are. PVE is really real expensive. You guys have a young rig for PVE lines?
No.
So it's, you know how it's that cost, so you did good. Now you're ahead of the game. With smoke testing, you find the trouble spots. I'm going to kind of get past all the PVE here and this is all the stuff you have to wear. This is lift station part of the sewer system. I do classes for anything that has to do with anything with utilities, up to the grade three level, help people get their certifications. I'm the guy on the ground, so use me and abuse me. I love it. Okay, let's get through all this. I do flagger safety, compliance face entry. Here is your generic sewer system. We're essentially blowing smoke through this part right here and we'll have it on top of the manhole and wherever there's problems with the pipes, the smoke will come all the way to the ground. And we locate it and then that gives us an idea where we're going to PVE the line. And you can actually see with the PVE where what's going on and you can fix it quickly. We can do a lot of different things, you can cure and place, a lot of stuff you can do to fix the sewer lines. Keep on trucking here. Notification is a big one. Notify the first responders, fire, police, Cal Fire, anybody that's involved, county fire, your local city people. That way nobody freaks out when smoke is going in their house. You all, did you already do the mailer? It hasn't gone out in the, okay. I'll give you some hints on that, we can make it good. This is kind of the first thing, you get out the line, put, it's a high pressure, biggest power washer you have, you know, this is on a trailer and it puts out about thirty-five hundred PSI, cleans all the stuff off either side of the line. That makes the smoke go through the cracks that might be when it comes up to the surface. This is an Excel spreadsheet I put together for Quincy last year. This is the I and I in one rain event. The spike you see is over about a six-hour rain event. Sixty foot, this is curb to curb, a one-inch water puts out about forty thousand gallons in a thousand feet. So all that ends up at the sewer plant. So your sewer plant operators, they're going to fit it. That's why it keeps it nice and good, so I don't pull it out too bad. This gives you a good thing for your council people and the people that serve the camps. You kind of know what's happening to the plant and if this all goes out to the plant, it gets in violation. Violation notices from the state range from three to five thousand dollars per violation per day. So it just starts piling up really quick. All right, so we, we're looking for root intrusion, we're looking for broken pipes. Down, down here. Page down, surface. Okay, so that's what it looks like inside the pipes. This is a cheaper, they call it a cease maker, and you can hand push it and it'll go about two hundred feet. Manhole, manholes normally about five hundred feet, so doesn't do a really good job and you can do it from one end, do it from the other, it's over a hundred feet, it's missing. So most of these cameras that we have have about six hundred feet table. Sometimes we give it a ride and tape it to the jetter, so we give it a ride up the hole and then we cut it off at the other manhole and pull it back nice and slow and see what's going on in the pipe. And that is what we're looking for. This is probably high groundwater intrusion on broken pipes. Bad earthquakes, we just had a bunch of them. Did you guys feel whatever here?
No.
Boy, did we feel it. I'm in Three Rivers, we were shaking and the windows were going like this. We thought we were going to lose some windows at the house, so. My wife's from here and she, I stole her way to Hillary County. This is what we don't want. This is, I was working with a lot of operators that might have their own equipment. That's a small tractor truck that sucks. The problems out of the sewer lines with smoke, this gets taken out to the dump sites or processing plants and it doesn't affect your floors anymore. I show people how to use all the equipment, I show them how to repair the equipment, so we have one that loans out. You have it, you have it here, we're going to bring it back, I think, in August, we're going to do an actual smoke test here. So I'll come by here if you want me to do another meeting, whether we can do that right before it. Get everybody online, I'll help you, maybe tomorrow we can do the verbiage for the mailer, so everybody knows what to do. I've got lots of pictures and all kinds of things that makes it real straightforward. This is the bigger tractor truck, you saw the smaller one. LED lighting is now the new safety thing, you don't have to worry about exploding things. We're out there in the middle of the road most of the time because the manholes are in the middle of the street. So we've got a D C and we're trying not to get a bad tail, so we're usually parking a big sized piece of equipment where traffic might be coming at us or if we're in the middle, we're doing it on both sides. So we're taking up a lot of the street per every manhole, so we skip a manhole to stay on time and go over the other manhole for the smoke testing, it's real quick. And we ask the people to help us. We have odd people and even people, odd addresses, even addresses. So if you have a drone, oh my God, we've been using drones for about a year now. If somebody has a drone or your police department has a drone, they're working in direction with a smoke test, fast, 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 and probably even quicker. I did some work over in Hawaii and we ended, we did it so fast because they had a drone. We actually smoke tested two-thirds of the fight island and they even think I'd get done with pod systems, but we did about two-thirds of the island because they had a drone. This is kind of looking how we're going to do the work while we're on the job. There's a lot of equipment out in the middle of the street, you see smoke going everywhere. We usually start early thirty, as soon as seven o'clock bell rings, we're ready to go and we're rolling and moving about eight o'clock. We'll stop about two because we went picks up. Once someone picks it up, you're wasting your time. We need to do it a little slower than that. Now, this is my smoke tested lake port, we found a meth lab in the state. That was interesting. But you'll, you'll find all kinds of problems. It happens really quick, you'll log everything and make a big gigantic report. I do pictures and pictures and more pictures. If there's something that happens, we take a picture of close, we take a picture of the house, we get an address or a building with the address or something that's noticeable in the town, so we can correlate. And we can GPS it too. We can make it so it's good stuff. And once we get it all done, we make our report and I think I'm about out of time, so I'm going to speed this up a little. We, we're looking for this. Smoke coming out of the ground, these are broken pipes. It was on a swell, this is in Monterey. We found this hole fifteen hundred foot that contained water when raining. And then it would come into the pipe and would make its way to the plant. This is the, anyway, that's a machine and liquid smoke, pretty much it, it's just over a manhole. And you can do it here. And there's your town. We're going to try to do the whole town, see how much we can get done. You guys know we have the problem areas, usually you guys are full of manholes during main events and finding out what's what, but it's really quick. I mean, your town's not a big town, I imagine we could do it in one or two days. And I'll be here to help you. Then, since you're members of California Rural Water, you get to keep the machine for thirty days, for free. It's a membership benefit, working, you know, I work for these guys, if you're a member of Rural Water, you get all the extra benefits for your equipment and you have a loan for free. So, and that's it.
I got a question.
Yes.
Will these examinations give us an idea of what the condition is of the pipes?
Immediately.
Okay.
To get it verified, we use a camera, but the smoke, that tells you the tale. We have a saying, smoke doesn't lie. When it starts showing up, usually we found, the biggest one I found was Calistoga, where someone in the past, before the pavement cement streets, connected the storm drain at the end of town, which the whole town rained too. So we've got thirty years of implosion coming into the sewer plant, but nobody said anything. So I show up and I'm like, show it to them, I never got asked back. He said, oh, no, we don't want, that's good, thank you, Mr. Conway, we don't, we don't need any more of your assistance. It happens, you know, you'll find your stuff. Well, there's lots of, lots of different ways, there's good technology out there now. The newest stuff is this stuff called a sitiform, it's essentially a cloth sock made out of different fibers. They plate it, they fill it full of steam, that turns it into PVC. You have that in clean pipes, but when you have cattial office joints, those socks seem to smooth out the flow, they also seal up the pipe. You may not think, you'll think they'll loose what's in flow, but they actually gain it because it's nice and smooth. They're gaining more to keep the sound in the well. Any other questions? Yes?
What does this cost?
For you, free!
Today and today only.
Today only. No, as, I use it as a member benefit to generate knowledge and what we do, we're, we have fee-based stuff, we do classes up in Sacramento and all around the state for operators, water treatment, wastewater distribution, collections. I get everybody all their shirts, help them, help them along. I've been helping a lot of the coastal towns out for the last five years. I'm now in your county, Monterey County's next, you know, I'll be in your area for probably three nights, helping people out. I got a million calls from Santa Cruz, I got to head over there probably tomorrow and find out what's going on in your county, but I've got a wealth of knowledge, use me and abuse me, I'm ready.
Will you be sharing that with some of our staff?
Yeah, whoever wants to become part of the smoke test team, we need, we need bodies, we need walkers, people to walk in backyards to see what's happening, photographers to take pictures up close and far away. We need a lot of people. You saw the one picture, what we, when we've done the meth lab, we had forty-two people. We had twenty-one on each side of the street. We found all kinds of stuff. And I got my butt chewed out by the chief of police because I ruined an investigation ongoing for the meth lab, which I didn't know was there. But, you know, we did put it in the paper, we did put it on the website, you know, some of you didn't read the memo or something, but...
I'm still not clear about something.
Go ahead.
So if you do smoke tests and smoke starts to start coming out of my front lawn...
That's a problem.
Because my central line is being compromised.
If it's in your front lawn, it's probably a lateral, it's probably not the city's, I don't know what your rules are here, but it usually has a...
So let's just say it's the main, my, my central main is the house to the street.
Okay, let's you know you have a problem.
Let's say I could add the name, I do, as smoke starts coming out.
It tells you you've got a broken lateral.
Right.
It is a broken lateral, it's usually around the sidewalk.
So in that case then, do I have an obligation to fix it? The city's not going to fix that, I mean, that's a homeowner's responsibility.
Homeowner's responsibility. I don't, I don't know, I think you would generate, you're messing up the city sewer system, do you want to fix this? I don't think your jurisdiction goes past the property line, so it would be up to you. What will happen is your sewer will flood up after a while and you just can't flush.
Right, but there's not to be mandated repairs to homeowners.
Not, not on their side of the property line. No, you, you try to do it soft shoot, get people to work with you. You don't come down with an iron fist and say, fix this. Let them know this is going to be a problem and later on down the line, it will come to costing money.
It will be a big problem.
When it messes up the big sewer lines.
So, so what is the potential cost for Dan? Because he's got a faulty line in his front lawn.
Have you raised that soft mainly to them?
Uh, yeah, they have small sizes too. They, you know, sitiform, I think it goes from two inch to twenty-ish.
Do you have a, but...
The question is of this, everything you're describing seems to be diagnosed with.
Yes, that's, that's what I do.
And then so, okay, so now we've diagnosed some issues, now this is the second step? Are we going to...
Lots of different ways to do it.
Treat the problem? Are we treating city problems or...
I don't have enough time in this meeting, we go through all of that, but I'd be happy to meet with you and tell you everything. But there is lots of ways to fix it. There's cure and place, you can fix the whole thing, dig and replace the lines.
Okay, so the first half of your report was about, it's our diagnosis and it's anything, I think it was the same.
My, when I come here in August, I'll teach your guys how to run the machine. And then you'll have it for a month and you can really go from heavy duty like plug lines and see in one block area how bad it is. You kind of know where your I and I is happening, I and I is implosion filtration, where the water comes in either through a manhole hole or coming in slow through the ground to fill up your flushing line.
So Pat-ish, if I wanted to fix my sewer lateral?
Oh, ten grand.
For my, my side of it?
Depends on who you got. If you've got kids, it'll dig it up for you, cheap.
Uh, just a question.
For my, my side of it?
Uh, depends on who you got. If you got kids, it'll dig it up for you. Cheap.
Uh, uh, just a question for, because this is gonna be a community thing.
A lot more. But if you have, if you do the digging yourself-
It's pretty easy to root.
True. Roots is really bad. And, uh, that's where the TV comes in. The TV can make a turn, look up your line, see what you got. There's all kinds of things.
Are there any funding service, sources at state level?
Many, many, many funding sources. I just went to a funding fair. We got one coming up in Plowes, and, uh, Cleveland. It's, it's about ten different ways to get money.
And you'll share all of those with us?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
I'll come by the office tomorrow.
Ten, ten different ways to get money on behalf of the municipality?
Yep, yep.
For the city?
Yep.
Would that be proceed Prop One, or proceed Prop-
Well, you guys heard of the Prop One. That money won't wait real quick. There's all different types of funding, like Prop One, that's free. But you gotta get it first.
You gotta get in line.
You gotta get in line. It's first come, first served. Those, there was, uh, five billion available, uh, on Central Coast. It was gone in a month. It got allocated because the engineers were on their game. They had all the paperwork. They had everything ready to go. Boom. So they did the homework on Prop One money, and they, they got it. And it's, it's first come, first served, and if you have your ducks in a row. So, there's a lot to it. There's not just, here, I'll give you money because you need it. You gotta prove it. Just like anything. Do you have anything else? What do you guys have? Al Bitch? Any more from you?
You should know that, uh, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, but when we have, in the winter, when we have severe rains, our sewer flow has like-
Over holistic ponds.
Well, not, no, not quite. But it's got like double the flow. Almost double the flow. So that tells me somewhere, somehow, storm drains and sewer-
Are connected.
Are mismatched, connected, or whatever you want to call it.
We can find it real quick with the smoke tester.
Well, that's-
That's where I say the smoke doesn't lie.
Yeah.
That's the gold mine.
And that, that would be a great thing.
Yeah. And you're all invited to come.
I have one question. Just out of timing, Pat. Do you want to do this in August? When do our utilities bills go out again? Uh, we want the utility bills to hit the homes before the smoke does.
I think they have that.
She tries to get them out between, uh, seven and the tenth.
Okay. So, we would get them out the first week in August, and then you could come the second week and then the third week. That'd be best. Okay, cool.
Got it on my calendar. I'm gonna get off the phone here. Walking around the calendar. You know, like a florist or something. Any, any questions from the other? Got it?
Got it. All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
Appreciate it.
Next item is four D, and we will make a change. In four D, we will add seven A with it. And seven A is- Seven A is, considered licensing the donated dip and stroll logo for future events. Shauna, we're gonna put that with, uh, with the update.
Thanks, Pat. You- This is four D and seven A.
This is four D and seven A together.
We want to bring you up to date on our festivities happening then September seventh and eighth for the city.
Uh, so my secretary passes out these packets too.
Thank you, your daughter.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit about it. Uh, we're gonna start the day off with a pancake breakfast at the, uh, uh, the Sonic Lodge at nine o'clock. I'll live at ten o'clock by the plaque dedication over here in front of the, um, the old firehouse, uh, by E. campusitis. Then at, uh, eleven o'clock sharp, um, your large map will show you the route of the parade. We'll be staging at the elementary school and the soccer field. And we'll be following the, um, down the Alameda and along Third Street. It's, uh, in pink on your maps. All the way to McCollum Street, at which point the, um, the equestrian units will branch off, uh, to the right, uh, go up to Second Street, and go back to their stage area where the horse trailers are. The rest of the group will go on to Abbey Field. Um, the first group that we have will be, well, the first one will be the, the VFW color guard, followed by, uh, the, uh, people depicting the early Spaniards, uh, the monks, uh, soldiers and their families. These will all be walking, uh, in hopefully inappropriate costumes. I'm sure they will be. Followed by three different groups of, uh, equestrian, um, participants. The first one will be, uh, depicting the Vaqueros. And this is the group that comes from over the, um, Old Stage Road and, yeah, it's a trail, excuse me, uh, from Salinas. You can tell I've been around a little while here, so. The next one, uh, I have two different entities here. I have people that, uh, have been active in the Gilroy Rodeo, and I have people who are active here in our own, um, uh, horse shows. Uh, and they will, the first part of those, that group will be depicting the early, um, rancher days. And, like, um, the late eighteen hundreds into the early nineteen hundreds. And then the last group will be more modern. I have a couple of rodeo queens who wanted to take part of this, so they'll be in the latter group. There's a drill team also that will be at the end of the equestrian group. Um, we have a couple of, um, of wagons that we're working on getting. One's a covered wagon, and the other's a buckboard. And then after tho- those, we should have the, uh, classic cars. And they'll be symbolic of the old Highway 101 that used to go through town down Third Street. Um, I just got word today that, um, Granite Rock is gonna have one of their very old, uh, cement mixer trucks in it. It's really, really cute. And our own fire engine in the old days, uh, will get polished up, uh, the, and it will. Representatives of the volunteer fire department. Um, hopefully each one of the classic cars will have people from different organizations that were, uh, very active here in San Juan during the, this whole period, uh, like, uh, the Navy Daughters of the Golden West, the F W., et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, and we would send invitations out to those for, for participating. At the conclusion of that, they will be walkers and the vehicles will go up to Abbey Park. The classic vehicles will park around the edges of Abbey Park for people to come and admire them and find them. And the horse, well, as I said before, the horsemen will go back to their, their staging area, uh, in front of the school. Uh, now, in the park, there's another, just a brief outline in your packet. Uh, the, we're, we're going to have, uh, the stage with the bands at home plate. Then we'll have another little stage over, more under the trees opposite, and that's where the games and contests, uh, and hopefully we'll have all of our picnic tables up there. More shaded area for folks to enjoy their, their free hot dogs and, uh, a lot of, uh, people also have a very popular. So it looks like a day of a whole lot of celebration and a lot of, uh, a lot of really good volunteers are actively planning on the games. What all they're gonna have, uh, like, uh, three-legged race and climb mountains loft and, uh, art activities for the children. Uh, I suggested a beard contest. A lot of the fellows think that's a great idea, but it's kind of the logistics of how to do that. Not growing a beard, but, you know, actually judging.
What do you have an inside, uh, the part?
The center part is for people to bring their blankets, have a picnic. Uh, there should be quite a bit of dancing, knowing the bands, uh, particularly the ones we have later on in the afternoon. Uh, before, uh, when I've seen them perform, there's a lot of dancing. And as, you know, for strolling, people just wandering around, neighbors seeing each other they haven't seen in a long time, and that kind of-
Will, will there be any canopies for shade for the-
Yeah. We're working on shades, definitely for the stage areas and for the food area. Uh, you know, to keep the instruments cool and the performers cool, that kind of thing. Encouraging people to bring, uh, parasols or whatever.
We bring tents by ten?
Well, if you put too many of those kinds of tents up, then people can't see. You know, the ones in back can't see through them. So, kind of discouraging that.
Any questions?
Anything else?
I also heard that right here across the third base, there is a reasonable question to the office.
Oh, and we're always looking for volunteers. Our esteemed mayor is going to do it later in the day. So, we, we know, we know we're in good hands, so.
I get coming to two or so.
Oh, I have seen a picture of the plaque that's gonna be dedicated here. It's really outstanding. I think we'll be proud of it.
The one that clappers design?
I'm sorry?
The one that clappers design?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's about this tall. Really, it's, it's, it's big, yeah.
A mon-, a monument.
There's a lot of words on it, so you need, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's small.
Yeah, the clappers are, uh, statements for, uh, having plaques all over there. The houses are very cute in the, in the state.
So I'm on to, um, day two, which is Sunday. The, the second day of our celebration is the San Juan Batista's first inaugural sip and celebrate beer and wine scroll. I've shared it with the council already. Just wanted to give you a little update on the planning processes. We've secured seventeen nonprofit entities here in San Juan Batista that serve our community, who are gonna participate in twenty different shops and merchants downtown. And, um, actually, Vertigo's gonna participate, and Shore Harbor's participating. So we're kind of trying to get all, all of San Juan's businesses involved as much as possible. We'll have twenty pouring locations. Um, we have so far secured nineteen breweries and wineries and a couple of combined, a couple cider businesses, waiting on one more, um, that have actually donated all of the wine, beer, and cider for the service. Um, we've secured, uh, just under seven thousand dollars in donations from local businesses for Sunday's event. Yeah, we're, so the goal is, we're trying to be self-sufficient. And the sip and celebrate, um, committee is formed by myself and, uh, as the chair, and then all the businesses that really know this type of, um, event. So we've got Bears, and we've got, um, Bird Twenty-Five, Aitton Pharaoh, Vertigo. They're all participating in this to help create something that they can continue on, ongoing for future years. Um, so, tickets are on sale. Only event price, if anyone's interested, um, they're, they're three and five dollars per individual. The event's from one until five on Sunday. And, um, we're encouraging people to check in early, go have lunch in the local restaurants, and then come join us for the sip and celebrate, um, event. So that's Sunday. Um, what I did want to talk to you about is the item that you pulled from your discussion, um, moved up to this item. So, I have a, I-
Sorry, you got cracker in my pocket.
So, I did provide you with a memo, um, kind of outlining what the event's about. And so the idea is that we want to make this a fundraiser for all seventeen of those nonprofits. So all the proceeds can be spread equally between all those nonprofits. Um, because this is a city-sponsored event, we need your permission to authorize us to, to do that, to actually donate those monies to these local nonprofits. So it is on your agenda tonight, um, a little differently than I had proposed. Um, so we're asking, it's on your agenda as a discussion item, really. Um, and so we're hoping that you'll bring it up in August for actual action to allow us to, uh, allow the city to donate those proceeds to all the nonprofits.
I, uh, spoke with, to the city manager about this earlier, and I think they might have to look at how they're organizing, because I don't think the best way is for the money to go through the city to someone else.
No.
So, I-
So I did follow up on that. I talked with Jill today, and she always assumes that the San Juan Batista Committee and their 501(c)(3) would help collect those funds and distribute them for you on your behalf.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
So that's, since I met with you this morning-
Okay. Yes, we do.
Um, and speaking with Deb, um, I talked with, I didn't have Mr. Quaid's phone number, but I talked with Jill. Oh, great. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Agreed. Agreed. And then the license issue?
Yeah, that's actually on your agenda tonight. The, the other piece of it wasn't on your agenda. Um, what is on your agenda is, um, we have a logo that was donated to us by Shipper Design, has estimate value of about twelve hundred dollars. Because it was donated to the city, this is a city-sponsored event, we initially asked, um, the interim city administrator, our city manager, asked us to have the council allow it to be licensed, um, to whatever entity wants to continue on with this event going forward. And since then, um, some of the, my subcommittee members have gotten, um, they actually attended a meeting of the San Juan, um, committee, I guess, is what they're called. Um, and they are going to, um, become kind of a subset of the San Juan Committee. And, uh, in that way, that, uh, sip and celebrate logo could actually be donated or given to the San Juan Committee instead of it being licensed, having to go through that process. Um, and I think that's what we were speaking about earlier.
Would that be a form of resolution?
So, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I can do a simple licensing agreement, which is on here and what was presented to me. But if it's just something that you would give away, then you could just put it on the agenda to do a resolution and to give it away.
Is that a MOU or?
No. I don't think so.
Straight out?
If they had a resolution, I think that would be the same as a agreement.
With some consideration that we might get it back, should, should they stop using it to negotiate or something like that?
If that's what you want to do, that would, I mean, that's-
So that, that would be a licensing agreement.
That's, the first I've heard of this, uh, was today. So I don't know exactly what you're gonna negotiate and-
Ed has arranged this, and, and it's kind of new to Deb and I, so. So that'll be an agenda item down the road.
Right.
The next meeting in time for the event. No problem. Any questions to these people?
Are your tickets? Uh, Saturday night, we will have a dance at the A. Tho. uh, Subturi, ten dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Four E, my, uh, monthly financial statement. Do we have any? So I don't know what the tradition is. I did speak with the treasurer today. He said he might be here, and, and he's not. Um, does the city council have any questions or concerns about the, the financials that are provided? I don't know if this would be in line, but I, you know, I feel that water should be our number one priority when it comes to spending money and stuff. Maybe it takes something. That's just my- I can, I can, I can update the council during the city managers' report.
Okay, cool.
Well, you're next. City manager report. All right. Um, uh, first and foremost, um, what a whirlwind of, of, of a two-week experience I've had. Um, and, and, and I'll do my best to get this in writing to you next time. Uh, I think that's better, because then we have a record moving forward. Also, um, I need to focus more on a schedule for our city council agenda and how our agendas are put together. This one got out of hand. I didn't realize it, so we're gonna implement a tighter system so that we have a little more control over that. Um, and it's terrific, uh, when the council has a chance to get together with me before the council meeting and, and share their concerns. It really helps me prepare for the meeting and, uh, be more included in on what the community's thinking. So, for those of you who can meet with me before the meeting, I really appreciate that. Um, the two biggest issues that, that I, that I walked into July second, besides the planning commission, um, were, were well six and, and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and Mr. Turris did a great job, uh, uh, I'll say, um, expediting, uh, progress on well six. And he informed the council that we weren't gonna make a June thirtieth goal, uh, but we've made really great progress in the last two weeks. In fact, um, we hope to be testing the filter on Monday. And the, uh, water board did stop by casually and congratulated us on the progress we're making rather than finus or citis. So, we haven't heard anything in that regard. Um, and with the testing of the filtration system, combining both well five and well six together and then filtering it, um, that'll start on Monday. That's really exciting. and then filtering it, that'll start on Monday, that's really exciting, we might have the water board out in two weeks, if all goes well. So if you've been out to the site, we've really made a ton of progress, getting all the electric panels and the, I'm learning about water, the coronator and all those things dialed in. And we're going to test it as we're going to use it on a blended basis, so that way we know that our filter's actually working and cleaning the water from well five, not just, not just running well six through it, so it'll be a thorough test. And ATech will be out on Monday, and hopefully we'll get to run our trial run. So that's good news for well six, and that's what, that's what we need to get out of, to get out of trouble's way there, and to get our nice redundant system up and ready. On the wastewater treatment plant, I did meet with the city's operator on Friday for about two hours, and he had some great recommendations, consistent with reports I believe the council has seen, on how to stabilize our system, trying to get out of the sludge business. The new firm that we're working with has a strategy where the sludge can be harvested and solidified and actually thrown in a dumpster and hauled away, versus the half a million dollars of dredging that the previous city manager had to go through, and it's just a much more efficient system, where they continue to do the daily operation and try and keep it up above water, so to speak, but it's labor intensive, and so we're looking for a long-term solution there. There are other longer-term solutions, and maybe Councilman Freeman will share from the meetings that we have this past two weeks. We've not, the EPA came out during Ed's last week, and we haven't had a response from them. We've tried to inventory the chemicals that they were concerned about, and so I believe we're, we're waiting to hear from them. As the council was advised, what we were going to be assessed as fines, we could probably invest back into the system, and we're challenging a decision that we have informally through an email, that maybe we wouldn't be able to use those fines. So that's really the biggest issue, but I'm waiting for the second shoe to drop, I haven't heard from them. So they came three weeks ago and they...
That's the Regional Water Quality Control Board?
And the EPA.
Oh, we're done.
Yeah, the EPA was called and did a surprise audit. Ed shared that with you, and he copied me on that. So also, just moving forward, getting to know the city engineer, she started, Julie started CSG on the same day I did, and I'm trying to ramp that up and get more from those services, because I told Ed, and I don't know that I showed this to the council, he left me with a great opportunity to fill the deputy city manager position, and he asked me, would that be community development, would that be special events, would that be public works? And I want to see what we're going to get out of the CSG contract, because public works are the most labor-intensive things we have moving forward, we have the most volume of things that we're trying to do at once, but if we're already paying for a public works position, then maybe I, the city would be better served with grants and community development than a different strength. So I need a couple more weeks to feel that out, because I'm still ramping up CSG's contract. Right now, I've only seen one, one person, and they showed a cadre of people that they could bring an army to us, and I'm, okay, where's your army? Yeah, bring them on, that's what we're paying for. So that's, that's where I'm at with that. I have gotten to know the two developers well. We had a real productive meeting with the Meritage, not about these, not about today's agenda item, but more about focusing on the roundabout and its safety, and we're trying to nudge that one forward. The city has come across a national expert, and we'd like to get a third opinion, and we think hopefully that'll break a stalemate that we have right now, a difference of opinions regarding the roundabout. But there's an ongoing conversation, and what I'm really happy about is that we started in an amicable way, the city engineer and myself, and had a really good ninety-minute conversation with them last week. Copper Leaf, we've gone out and inspected the offsite improvements at Copper Leaf, they're, they're going to be sending a punch list and getting to the, to the end of that list. They've pulled almost all their permits, both developments will be pulling all their permits by the end of the year, we hope, and that's really good to know. Learning about cannabis, as we, as we, by the seat of my pants, one of us, and interested to know if the council is going to reconvene the cannabis subcommittee, but we can talk about that when the ordinance comes up. Working on a community hall rental policy, we've, I've had a lot of conversations with staff and with members of the community, considering a tighter community hall rental policy, and then the agreement for the logo, or whatever's needed there to transmit that to the San Juan Batista Committee. I did get an email from the Mission Village Voice, and they're asking me if I want to write an article, and I wondered what the council's thoughts were about that, if they wanted a monthly, if they're okay with a monthly status report, some version that I give you would turn into the weekly. If you think that serves the city well, I'm happy to do that, a brief status report. I guess that was done in the past? I think that's a great idea. If that's a great idea, then I'll follow through, and that's...
As long as you want to do it, yeah.
Well, it's just we had an abbreviated version of what I'm providing to the council.
But it would be nice.
Yeah, it would be great.
Cool, okay. That's, that's what's happening in my office, and I'm trying not to read Facebook, so...
Yeah, I don't.
So that's where I'm at. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Building and planning report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, good evening. Todd Kennedy, your city planner, I'd like to just go over a few things, just to point out. Out of all these projects on the list you have in front of you, one thing I'd like to point out that stands out is the housing element. I'd like to give a quick update on that. We have a draft housing element back from the consultant EMC Planning Group, and we are working on scheduling it for a planning commission workshop. It would be separate from the regular planning commission, regular meetings, and we're shooting for mid-August or so. So at that time, when it gets posted, I do ask all of you and members of the public to stay tuned, and then when that's, when it done, after that clears planning commission, we'll move on to city council for their review. So that's where we are right now, and I can answer any questions you may have, and...
How big is it?
Right now, I can...
How many pages is it?
Okay, eighty-five pages.
I'd like to see a copy of it before it goes forward.
One thing, also, another thing that's probably separate from this list, I'd just like to point out, it kind of dawned on me during consent, and then also during the Cesquis Centennial presentation. For special events, let me just start from the beginning, we kind of touched on it, but I'd like to just give an overview of what's happening. I do apologize for not bringing that up earlier. All of our special events, as you all know, we rely heavily on them, but I decided to step up our process, and because of that, it's in response to several things that have occurred during previous, you know, during previous events, including traffic, disposal, and some other items. As a result, I found out that our special events were not adequately reviewed. During previous administrations, they were all signed off on everyone's behalf, so I did my first go-around back on July 3rd. My meeting, committee, I guess, I guess you can say, put together a coalition that included the sheriff's department, fire department, building, public works, recology, integrated waste management. And I wanted them to all be in the room together, we review, and then we meet with the applicant. It's kind of copies and mimics reviews to other jurisdictions, so I figured these would be comprehensive, and I think would actually be able to vet a lot of items. My next go-around is on August 1st, here in City Hall, and I have a total of four events that will be reviewed, so including the chicken festival, so...
I just might suggest that you develop, out of all this hard work you're doing, a checklist that you can literally give to, to whatever applicant is applying for the special event, and so he or she can go down the, you know, the list and check this off, and make it kind of standardized, so everyone has to do not the same thing, but at least cover the same basis, because different events will have different sizes and things like that. Some might need two dumpster bins, and others need three, and some only need one, no, whatever, but they, you know, they need to check, standardized checklist, so it makes it kind of a little bit easier for them.
Absolutely.
But it all makes it easier for you, too, because you know that you've covered all the bases.
If, if I can address that for just one second, being the first to go through it on such a very short notice, for the antique fair, being thirty days out, it was kind of daunting for what needs to be done, and I, as a council member, appreciate all the efforts that you're doing to make them all the same, and request the same documents from everybody who has to have a checklist, or items checked off. There is a checklist.
Okay, great.
And everybody who was involved in this checklist was present at the table, and it was for several events that were upcoming, so you have to go to everybody to have it checked off beforehand, and I think it's phenomenal, it's about time that San Juan is being protected. Yeah.
And also...
Sorry, it was my first.
Oh, no, it's okay. Glad you were there.
Yeah.
So, no, we do appreciate the good feedback, but also preferably, I'd like this to go through the review process at staff level, before it goes on planning, on the city council agenda for consent, for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
Has these things that take place, but that way you can already be assured that it's already been reviewed.
And we're looking at ninety days out?
That's what it says on the application.
Okay.
You know, I might have to go back and look, it's either sixty or ninety days, but during that time is when staff reviews, we ask the questions, we go through it, and it was mentioned earlier, the rib cook-off, you know, I'd like to go back and look at that and do a review as well. So the whole idea is to take preventative measures to keep, you know, bad things from happening, for lack of a better term, just to be perfectly candid.
They're one of those that probably might need a lot more waste management skills involved.
And waste management is at the table.
Yeah.
I do have one question or concern, I suppose, that the, the fire department and the health department are on-site the day of events, so if there's an issue, the event or vendors are shut down. So that was just a concern I had, being somebody who has to apply for one of these, that I have an event going on, and it can potentially be shut down, or a part of it be shut down that morning.
And why, why would they shut you down?
The fire department goes through and looks for space between, the middle of the road is clear, fire extinguishers, where oil is being dumped.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalks are clear, and it's moments before the gates are open. And, and I know that can't be addressed until during the event, to see how it goes on, so that's something that needs to be thrown up front to applicants.
And that's the whole point of these meetings, is to address that.
Right, absolutely.
And I include the health department on my review.
Yep, the health department already was aware, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we need a clear point of view of what the liability is for the city.
Yeah, well, and that's what, that's what these meetings are all about, and it went really well, and everybody who was a stakeholder in it was involved. The table had ten, maybe, different entities, fire, health, the county, recology, lots of people.
Sure. I would just like to say that, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely, totally appreciated, thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Long time coming.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, it was the antique fair that went first.
Now we go to reports from city council appointees to regional organizations and committees. Do we have any?
So there was no meetings in the month of July.
That's correct.
But...
However.
However, the city manager, myself, Anthony Botello, and Jeff Catano of the San Bernardino Water Board, or District, whatever they call themselves, met at the city manager's office last week to discuss the ongoing situation with the violations of our discharged water into the Poharo River, because we don't meet the chloride specs set up by the, by the state water board. And so we went through a couple of scenarios and options and, and things, I don't know how much you want to get into the weeds here, Don, but...
Well, I think it's important, and the community probably understood this before I did, that the salt in the water needs to be taken care of before it gets to our treatment plant.
Right.
There's nothing we can do at the treatment plant, once salty water arrives.
Well, it's very expensive to remove that excessively, so there, there is two possibilities. There's a water source in Betabell, and an already existing water source at the West Hills Water Treatment Plant, which is four and a half miles away from our eastern boundary. Betabell thing, we don't know, we've never seen a water chemistry report, so I don't know the calcium carbonate, which is why you need a water softener. But the West Hills Water Treatment Plant is surface water, comes from the, from the canal on the other side of the mountain, stored in Chaco Pass, and then later in San Justo, and it goes through one or two treatment plants in Hollister. Closest one to us is West Hills, four and a half to five miles away. It is downhill all the way, so we wouldn't need the pump. And to me, that sounds like the easiest, most logical way to get high-quality water. We can blend it with our existing well water, which is what the city of Hollister does, they now use a similar system, where they take water from both of those plants, and they blend it, about seventy percent surface water from those two treatment plants, and thirty percent well water from their existing wells, and they meet the discharge requirements required by the state. So I don't believe in reinventing the wheel, I would just suggest we kind of do what they do, and do a seventy-thirty blend. It gives us redundancy, because the plant has all the water we need, the wells, now that they've been drilled and pumped, or drilled and put into operation, also have redundancy, so we'd actually almost have a triple redundancy, which I think would make the state water board very happy. The disadvantage is, the price of water from that area, from the canal, is rather expensive, between four and five hundred dollars an acre foot. But, on the other hand, the state's been on our case for over twenty years, through ten different city councils, through seven or eight city managers, and they're, they're going to quit playing games, and they're going to up the fines, and up the fines, and our water bill's going to go up with no appreciable quality improvements, and your money's going to go to the state in terms of a fine, which I don't want to see.
Other questions? Some of that fine money wasn't being used back in, but it's no longer available?
That's wastewater.
That's what they say.
Wastewater, yeah.
That's what they say. They sent a letter to Ed, I believe it was about three weeks ago, just before he left, and the state said that we used to be a poor city, and we had a certain unemployment rate, and we had a certain poverty rate, or whatever, and they were going to be nice to us, and that's no longer, so...
Yeah, just a clarification, the fines that were being thrown on us, we were using some of that money to try to fix the problem, but we no longer have access to it.
We never used, we never used it, we're just collecting and...
But, didn't you say, Don, didn't you say that you were looking into trying to recover that?
Well, I don't know what good-looking into it will do. I, I'm waiting for them to respond, so I have some type of argument that I can put forward, so I don't know, this is all new.
Yeah.
I heard it was about $200,000, and it's, you know, that we thought we could use towards repairs at the treatment plant, and now it looks like we'll have fines and necessary repairs at the treatment plant, and that would be much harder to, much harder hurdle to jump over.
So, as the other gentleman said, there is money available, what we need to do is, we need, we're doing a water study, and we need to probably do an engineering study specific to bringing a different source of water to the city, get a reasonable cost, or get some sort of estimated cost, other than the back of, back of the envelope costs that I would do, which is about five million bucks, and maybe it's a little less, maybe it's a little more, I don't know, but we have to start somewhere. If you build your own treatment plant, because there is pipes underground right now carrying untreated, undrinkable water, if we build our own treatment plant to treat that water, that's... that's a twenty-million-dollar operation, you know? Plus, you have to hire people to run it. For a very small community, that's very expensive.
Bob, can you come to the microphone, please?
This isn't really on the agenda, so I don't know that we should have a discussion about it. It was a little bit diverted from council reports, and I think I have to kind of put an end to the discussion of that for Brown App purposes.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda here. These are reports on the city council appointees to differ.
Like you said, there were many meetings.
Well, I do have an update, even though we did not have a meeting in July for the COG. The COG has appointed eleven members to the Citizens Measure G Oversight Committee. We have two members in San Juan Baptista out of the eleven-member board. The first meeting will be on Monday, August 5th, at six p.m. at 2301 Technology Way, upstairs.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay. The other is that we have unmet transit needs after an extensive public outreach process. The COG reviewed comments on the public transit system, and the COG will be funding additional bus service during the midday, more rights to medical services outside of San Benito County, and additional service to and from Garaville College in Gilroy. Those are the new routes that the COG proposed.
So is that like St. Louise Hospital in Gilroy?
Yeah. Grant award the Highway 156 multi-model enhancement study, but didn't grant it a two-hundred-thousand-dollar competitive planning grant from Caltrans. The study will focus on the State Route 156 corridor between San Juan Baptista and West Hollister, and the plan will identify conceptual designs that will integrate and connect the transportation system, including addressing circulation issues at major intersections, providing access to the existing National Historic De Anza Trail, and improve bicycle connectivity on the existing State Route 156 corridor between Hollister to San Juan Baptista once a new State Route 156 expressway is completed. The Highway 25-156 roundabout, the Caltrans District 5, held a public information meeting on the proposed safety roundabout project on June 25th. Sorry, it's gone. The COG directive requires that Caltrans provide additional information about other safety measures at the intersection, such as rumba strips and modified signals. There's a big controversy on the big turnaround, turnabout on 25 and 156. But, anyway, that's where we're at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else saying? Not, but move forward. Strategic Plan Committee report.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, once again, Todd Kennedy, council members, Todd Kennedy, your city planner, sorry, got a little ahead of myself. Strategic Planning Committee report. We have not met as of June, however, we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, the 18th. So hopefully, at next council meeting, I'll have a report for you, myself and the chair.
Question. Is the farmer's market a part of your strategic plan?
It's been discussed during previous meetings.
Because I've been working on the side with an individual that's very interested in reviewing.
Is the information on the application-
He submitted a permit, a request of permit.
Especially within application, right.
Yeah, and he wants to make this year-round, of course, knowing that the Sundays when we have other events, he won't be here.
I can go back and check, and I can cross-check the two, the Strategic Planning Committee and the application.
Please.
Together, so.
I'd like to discuss that, I mean, bring it up, put it on the agenda, maybe next meeting, I'm not sure, we need that interview.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I have public comment to decide?
Yes.
Bob Quaid?
Who's the chair of the committee? Who's the chair?
Anna Lisa.
Oh, Anna Lisa, okay, okay. So, I just, I mentioned at the last city council meeting, we need to update the park master plan, and so hopefully, do you know who's looking at that?
A tour line to me.
Okay, well, go to the park meeting.
Now we'll move to public hearing events. Five A, introduce an ordinance amending the Rantel Vista Development Agreement to address ambiguities and resolve a dispute about interpretation. Staff report.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The interim city manager brought the concept forward at the June meeting before the council, and with the council's tentative agreement, we formulated a draft ordinance and presented it to our Planning Commission July 2nd. The Planning Commission was satisfied with the give-and-take and the resolution that was recommended. And in summary, for those who were not part of those conversations, the Meritage Homes has contributed five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars over and above its required fees to address the city's water supply issues, been a great help in that. The city adopted interpretations of ambiguous language which increased its fee obligations. Basically, a conversation about what the size of a unit is and the square footage of a fee calculation, and it would vary up to, the largest unit, I believe, is four-thousand square feet, which would have a big impact on those set fees. So, what we tried, they've been paying their fees under protest, and, well, under the threat of litigation, Ed Hughes had recommended to the council and now to the Planning Commission that these building fees be locked in, and that the habitable space of each house, that the patios and garages, will be charged building permit fees in accordance with the current schedule. And the benefit to us is, that's a little bit of a lower fee on that side, but the benefit to us will be that those paid on a per-unit basis will now be charged the fees effective July 1, 2019. So that offsets some of the expense, and then there was an additional contribution in the agreement of twenty-five thousand dollars to make safety improvements to the sewer lift station. Those are exterior improvements, estimated to cost close to fifty thousand dollars, so we have the CIP for twenty-five, and with this matching of twenty-five, we'd be able to put in asphalt roads and better safety equipment for our crews to maintain the lift station. I went back after meeting with a few of the council members, and basically Ed explained to me that the analysis on his spreadsheet shows that it's not a one-for-one trade, but the difference in the function of the size of the remaining units, so we lose the larger unit, but it was not reasonable to charge double impact fees for larger houses. That was his feeling on it, and, you know, the council could take the stand that we insist on a more aggressive interpretation, but then risk the cost of litigation in exchange. So, the council, the Planning Commission agreed with that, and thought it was a more amicable way to proceed, and that the city does get the benefit of applying the more current impact fees per unit. In the weeds a little bit, there are some blanks in the ordinance, and I've gone back today, pardon me, and filled those in. The Second Amendment occurred on March 20th, 2018, so that's the first one on page one of the draft ordinance. And then there's a few other dates, today's date, and some other minor details. So, for the public and the council's consideration, we do have a completed agreement and ordinance for this. So, with that, I don't know if the developer would like to speak on it, or maybe I missed a detail.
Yeah, John Berth is with Meritage Homes. I believe that he's outlined the issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I had questions, and I guess they were for you, Deborah, our attorney. What I'm wondering is, is it typical for a developer to have their homes put out, and then we pay, they pay for the old prices instead of new prices? Is it typical that-
So that is what a development agreement is for, to lock the prices at the time the development agreement is signed.
All right. And, yeah, okay.
Public comments.
Emily Rensel?
I'm sort of piggybacking, I don't think this is actually germane to this particular issue, but I've been concerned, as I go by there, that the former year-round seasonal wetland has been heavily disturbed. I haven't seen water in there for over a year, despite heavy rainfall this last winter, and I'm hoping that that wetland was supposed to be preserved as part of this development, and I have talked to Todd, and he says they're working on it, but I hope that you will keep the pressure on so that that beautiful natural area will be returned. Thank you.
Hi, Phil.
Any other?
No.
No more public hearing, we close the public hearing. Now we have discussion by a council? Any discussion? Given no discussion, the possible action is a motion to introduce an ordinance approving a third amendment to the Development Agreement with Meritage Homes of California 8 regarding the Rantel Vista process. So, we need some action on that, if we need a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I move that we approve the amendment to the Development Agreement with Meritage Homes regarding the Rantel Vista project, ordinance number 2019 dash-
To be determined on the second reading.
Okay.
To be determined? We have a second.
I'll second.
Any other, any more discussion on this? We call for the question, all in favor, of the motion, respond by aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries. Five B, introduce an ordinance amending section 11 dash 02 dash 050 of the San Juan Baptista Municipal Code to allow cannabis facilities in industrial zoning districts by conditional use permit, exempt from C Core Guidelines Sections 15061 and 15378. This is the final reading of the ordinance. Staff report. Mr. Kennedy.
Okay.
Huh? Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Once again, Todd Kennedy, your city planner here. The item before you is a zoning text amendment in response to the passage of a couple ordinances for cannabis here in town, and we don't have any provisions in our zoning ordinance addressing them. And as was stated in the previous documents, is that cannabis facilities to be located in industrial zones by conditional use permit. It consists of all the different types of uses within the provisions of the ordinance. So that's what's before you tonight, for, and let me just clarify for the record, this is the first reading of this ordinance. So, that pretty much concludes my briefing, my presentation for tonight, myself or city staff, and if you have any questions you may have tonight.
This went to the Planning Commission?
Yes, it did. Went to Planning Commission back in, back on June 4th, and it was recommended to the city council, recommended to the city council for-
Does this include testing facilities for cannabis also, Todd?
It includes, yeah.
Okay.
On this map, it's the purple?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
On that, that's it, though.
Ah, thank you.
The other side, Phil? Looking at a map, Bob.
Do you want to come look at it with us? I'm just saying, that's over by Sehar, that's over by Perkins Place, that's all I said.
I'm just trying to figure out where the property is.
What's the diamond shape? That's where the-
Sehar. That's the-
Within post in that, huh?
Okay, why don't we open this for public hearing? Do we have any public hearings? Any very interesting speaker? There's no input, then we'll close the public hearing, and now we can discuss it in the council. The possible action is a motion to introduce an ordinance approving a zoning text amendment to Section 11 dash 02 dash 050 to allow cannabis facilities in industrial zoning districts by conditional use permit. So the chair will entertain a motion to introduce his ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm about to introduce an ordinance approving a zoning text amendment to Section 11 dash 02 dash 050, which will allow cannabis facilities in industrial zoning districts by conditional use permit.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on this item? Now we'll call for the question, all in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go into action items. Considered letter stating city position on the San Benito County zone changes implementing the commercial land use designation. We have generated a letter, yeah, you-
You have to excuse yourself.
Okay, basically, here's, it's like a four-page letter. If you want me to read it, I'll read the whole thing.
Can you please wait?
I'll read the resolution.
Hang on, and wait until the end.
Oh, yeah, of course. Can I ask a quick question here, now that Dan's- Did you write this letter?
So my colleague, Bob Brath, he wrote this letter after your last meeting.
Thank you. I thought it was a very good letter.
Well, I wrote it. You approved it, so I'm done.
There's a lot of information here, someone has read the letter, and it's long, it's three pages long.
Yeah, you don't need to read the whole.
You don't-
They say-
It's on the website.
It's on the website, and it's in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't-
Okay, I'll read the resolution, and we'll go with the resolution of that. The resolution states, it's a resolution of the city council, the city of San Juan Baptista approving a letter in opposition to amendment of San Benito County Code Title 25, zoning code, where a new zoning district to be designated is a regional commercial C3 zoning district. Whereas on June 18th, 2019, the city council reviewed the staff report, the county planning staff recommendations adopted at the meeting of the county planning commission held on May 15th, 2019, that San Benito County Board of Supervisors approve a new zoning district which establish commercial regional modes to facility development, and whereas commercial developments such modes is initially proposed to take place and be located at Betabel Road, Highway 129, Shirley Road, Rock's Ranch, Red Barn, and Livestock 101, and whereas on June 18th, 2019, the city council heard public comments from city residents and from members of the public residing within the county, all of whom spoke in opposition to the recommendations of the county planning commission, and whereas the city council on June 18th, 2019, directed a letter to the San Benito County Board of Supervisor VP Fair, expressing this council's opposition to amend of the San Benito County Code Title 25, zoning code, to establish new regional commercial C3 zoning district and the establishment of the four initial nodes. Now therefore, the city council of the city of San Juan Baptista hereby resolves as follows. Section 1, the letter attached, cividity is approved for the mayor's signature, like about four pages. Section 2, the city manager's office is authorized to transmit the letter to the clerk of the San Benito County Board of Supervisors, and request that the letter be included in the record for the Board of Supervisor's consideration and the planning commission recommendation at the board's reading on July 23rd, 2019, or whenever the matter may next come before the board. Passed and adopted at a duly noticed meeting, the city council of the city of San Juan Batista, held on sixteenth day of July, twenty nineteen, by the following votes. Okay? Do we have any public comments?
We do.
All right.
Valerie Egman?
Mayor and council members. I am saddened to see the decision. Unfortunately, I was not able to be here when the full discussion was made. But I believe that the city of San Juan is reducing its future possibilities as far as tourist and economic growth go. The Pajaro River, the developments that can go along that Pajaro River that are for recreation that would be brought into San Juan with bicycle paths, to me seem to be a... Not brought into relevance in the discussion. Until, until a plan is, is brought to the planning department, a request for development, there is, there is no possibility for anything to move forward until that's agreed on. Where the city of San Juan has real power, is negotiating with the planning department, with the county, about the development agreements that are to be made with those developers. At that point, you can ask for paths into San Juan. You can demand that there be tourist information there that is strong in voice, that would bring more development, more developed tourism to San Juan. Now the, in San Juan, you've got, or actually, the whole Pinnacle Gateway Partnership is including San Juan. And all of those nodes should be involved with the Gateway Partnership because all of those areas will funnel more tourism into San Benito County. And this is vital importance. And the more impediments we have toward this type of positive development is going to drag on the difficulty of businesses in San Juan to thrive. And I have been on the streets of San Juan from a toddler on. I have seen businesses come and businesses go. I've seen the town rise and I've seen it fall. And I've seen it during the heyday of the ideal cement plant and the brutal kind of transition it had to make once the plant was disbanded. So San Juan deserves to have the greatest break possible provided by the city council. And I feel that it has been a mistake to rule out those nodes. And I have not read the letter, so I cannot say exactly what kind of recommendation there is to the county. But I'm sadly, I'm very disappointed that this town has, has put a blanket on the forward movement of something that could be negotiated with development agreements and made a positive effect on the town. My two grandsons live by me on School Road. This is my environment. I love this town. I love our environment. I love San Benito County. And I expect that everybody should be in tune and together for the forward movement of our economy. I want my kids to stay here. You want your kids to stay here. We all want to provide some kind of affordable housing. And we can't do it unless we've got business to work with us. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
One other?
Bob Quaid.
Bob Quaid, one sixty lang. I agree with Valerie. I think you should not send this letter to the county because this, until we know what's going in at those nodes, how can we oppose them? And I think the letter is, is not really correct in saying that it's going to hurt the economy of San Juan Batista. I think, like Valerie said, when, when someone comes in and proposes a plan out there, we can negotiate with that developer so it will enhance San Juan and draw tourists into town. We're not getting people driving down the highway that's going to stop at a gas station or the alligator farm or whatever we're going to put out there. You know, but if they stop there, if they can then be directed into the city to support our businesses, I think it will help San Juan Batista. And so for us to oppose them before we know what's going in those nodes, I think we're being a little bit short-sighted in our thinking. So I urge you not to send the letter. And I wasn't at the last meeting, but I'm not sure how many residents from San Juan spoke, but I think a lot of people that spoke were from Aromas. So, you know, I urge you not to send the letter. Thank you.
Bob, if I, one of the things that was presented to us was that the people would stop there and not come into San Juan. And so that really concerned me. I would rather have them say, oh, I'm hungry. Where can I go? And I'll look on my phone and it'll say Hardin's or Dona's stairs or Inaka and not In-N-Out Burger at Betabell. You know, so, you know, if that's your choice...
But that's, that's why when those, when those people come before the county and present a plan, that's when we have to say, what are you going to do to help San Juan Batista? Maybe they're, you know, Valerie talked about a bicycle system.
Right.
Maybe, maybe you require them to have a shuttle to shuttle people into San Juan Batista. You know, there's different things you can do that I don't think it will hurt San Juan Batista. I think it can only help San Juan Batista. And besides helping San Juan Batista, it's going to help the county as far as collecting tax dollars. And the county is hurting for money.
I realize that. And, and I, I'm still kind of on the fence off because of the need for money, but I, you know, I just don't want to see those people zipping by on one oh one.
They're already, they're already zipping by. If you get them...
They're crawling by.
What? They're zipping by or crawling by. If you get them to stop and there's something there that directs them into San Juan Batista, they get there and they see, oh, there's a mission there that we can go see. There's a, there's a, there's a Mexican restaurant. There's no Mexican restaurant out there. There's a, or there's a Japanese restaurant. It may draw people into San Juan Batista. It's not going to draw everybody in, but it probably will draw more than...
And part of my, you know, reason was it was too, it was too amorphous, for lack of a better word, and that's the best word I can think of. It was lack of...
Well, there's no development out there yet, John.
I know, I know.
And that's, why object to it before we know what it's going to be?
Because, because once it's there, then you can't turn it, you can't turn it back. You know, so that's, that's the argument against that. But, you know...
But for our letter to stay, it's going to hurt San Juan. We don't know that. How can we say it's going to hurt San Juan's business in San Juan?
And the last letters, the last paragraph or the last sentence kind of alludes to that where it says that the city council is willing to work together with the county to ensure commercial development can take place in locations and in manner and scale that continues to protect the shared interest of our residents and unique town.
Well, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with both my friends, Val and Bob.
This is a zoning change that allows intense development at four very difficult intersections from, on one oh one. Every one of them has oddball entrances and exits. In order to attract people to these five-story hotels and alligator parks and indoor swimming things, Wolf something or other, they're going to have to put up billboards and all manner and fashion of flashing lights to get people to come off the highway to those places. And if they miss them and decide they have to go back, it's a very complicated turnaround. So, these are not the right places for these kinds of, this kind of zoning. I think it's, if you go through Gilroy and Morgan Hill, it's wall-to-wall signs, hundreds of signs, calling for people's attention. You get to Bloomfield and suddenly you're in the beautiful San Benito County area. And the scenery, scenery that we should be selling in this county, not this zoning. It's going to be far too late by the time a developer has purchased the property, probably contingently, but nonetheless purchased it with the idea that they can build the alligator park and so forth. And by then, there will be people with vested interests and all sorts of complications. So I'm totally in favor of you sending a letter expressing the concerns that this kind of development should be city-centered. There's all kinds of half-baked development in downtown Hollister that's not working very well. Why not redevelop that and draw people into it? And why not advertise that San Juan is a special, unusual place rather than the usual? And so I urge you, and the other thing I will say is that Betabell is a floodplain for the San Benito River. And they're proposing all this stuff in a floodplain. They're either going to have to build it up or insure it or do something or do something that's going to cause future problems. And as was pointed out, if the alligators get loose, who knows what will happen? So I think I'm very much in favor of having you send this letter and make the county think about this some more because there are also seven other places that they're looking at nodes, also with difficult traffic situations. So I think if somebody misses Betabell going north, they have to go to Highway twenty-five. Has anybody been at that intersection and tried to do a U-turn? I did it once. And it's, it's nutty. It's crazy.
I appreciate you keeping quiet back there.
There are three seconds left, so please send the letter.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments?
We don't have any other comments.
We'll close at public comments. Discussion by the council?
I think that my, my biggest concern is water. We don't have an abundance of water as a traffic. And if it were, if they're proposing these commercial nodes, and if it, if it were a different type of business that was going to be going, a commercial business that was going to go in like a lottery or something, you know, the alligators make me nervous.
They're going to rue the day of a thought about alligators.
Okay, our possible action is a motion to adopt resolution twenty nineteen approving a letter in opposition to amendment of the San Benito County Code Title twenty-five zoning code to add a new zoning district to be designated as a regional commercial C three zoning The chair will entertain a motion. For approval?
I make the motion that we approve this resolution and that it is submitted to San Benito County Superiors.
I second that.
Second?
Leslie.
Leslie. Okay. There's no further discussion? We'll call for the questions. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number B, six B, approve resolution establishing this special tax for community facilities, District number twenty eighteen dash zero one for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a continuation of an effort that's been ongoing since the development was proposed. The city council officially formed the San Juan Batista Community Facilities District October sixteenth, twenty eighteen. And what this action before you tonight will do is actually enact that in time for the tax assessor to put it on the July tax bills. So it's time, as the homes are being sold, to move forward with this assessment district so we can begin to form our landscape services contracts and other things that we'll need to do as we are for, for the, for the one district that was approved at the last meeting. It's a similar process, but it's a minimal route process versus using an older California highways code. Much simpler to do, annual reports, and this is simply laying that out as proposed. And when I looked at it, I noticed that some of the assessments were substantially lower than the others and it's simply that those are parcels that haven't pulled building permits yet. So those are parcels that haven't been developed yet. So as you look at the, at the list, in some cases, it's down to thirty-seven dollars, in other cases, forty-five dollars. Those are simply homes that have not received their building permits yet, so they're not under construction. They're considered vacant lots until next year when the building permits will be pulled. So they'll come on the roll next year.
Is this for Copper Leaf or for Rento Vista?
For both.
Oh, for both? Okay. Thank you.
Assessors rule for both.
Okay. All of this with public comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll close the public comment. Discussion by council. If there's none, a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen leaving the annual, leaving the annual special tax for community facilities, District number twenty eighteen dash zero one for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty. This will require a roll call vote.
Does anyone still have a motion?
Any motion?
I will make the motion that we adopt the resolution for the annual level approval.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the questions. All in favor, respond by aye. It's roll call.
I'm in.
Councilmember DeBries?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Edge?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye.
All members of the council being present with the motion as stated by the maker of passing the ordinance.
Thank you. Now we go to C, review agreement with Level One for security services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It was discussed during a budget workshop that staff felt that we had a three-year agreement with Level One Security Services. To find out that the actual agreement that was approved by the council was only for one year, expiring May third. And so we've been continuing the services absent a contract. And this is an effort to, to change that and to get them up to speed with the new three-year agreement. The, the services were bid and, and the selection process was, was made and was valid and the city manager has the authority to, to, to issue a new contract. But there are a few issues we just wanted to share with the council and try and get them straightened out so when we finalize our new scope of work, we'll have the, an accurate scope of work and an accurate pricing and accurate invoices moving forward. So this is a cleanup matter. I've met twice with, with Level One staff and we've come to these agreements and the terms provided. So there was a conversation about the use of personal protective equipment. The city's insurance carrier declined to allow the use of batons or tasers. Those agreed to the use of pepper spray. Additional patrol hours at the direction of the city manager, that is included in the budget adopted by the council for fiscal year nineteen twenty. First right of refusal. A Level One proposed that the contractually commit to provide Level One with a first right of refusal for security services. And this was pertaining to, as I understand, the downtown area, their, their normal business that they do every night, not related to special events or community hall or other Basically, the city attorney, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, had suggested that we remove that language from the contract. And as I understood it, Level One was, was okay with that. And then in terms of Level One services with the community hall, I'm suggesting, as I stated in my status report, that we do an informal bid process and bring forward hopefully a selection, including Level One perhaps, of qualified, vetted, licensed, and insured providers. So then in the event that if Level One is not available or one of the other groups is not available, the renters of the hall would have a choice of three qualified companies. So that's what I'm proposing as a resolution to that. Activity reports, we're hoping, we're going to require a monthly act... Activity reports, we're hoping, we're going to require a monthly activity report, which they've been very good at coming forth. If I get a call from a rentor, and I've had this happen twice since I've been here, whether it's discrepancies, or they're not satisfied, or Level One is concerned that the behavior at the hall was not that fit of mature adults or what have you, that we look into that. So they've been very forthcoming with information and reports. We just want to formalize it in the agreement. We have to approve the invoices for May and June because they're not formally approved by a contract. And then the term of the new agreement would be executed for a three-year period, beginning July 1 of this year. And that the compensation matched exactly what they had proposed previously, only this time I've tried to show it in a table at the bottom of the staff report on page 85 of your packet that's increasing 75 cents per year, but effective July 1. In the past, it had been effective in January, and that wasn't happening either. So with that, cleanup issues, I have a draft agreement from Deb, all our city attorney, and I would attach a scope of work that reflects those points and clarification, and then we would start fresh with a new contract. So if you have any questions, or would like to hear from Level One?
I just have a question. Why did we vote back in February, I think it was, February? Why did we vote?
February 19.
Deborah, do you remember? Why did we vote to have Level One be the preferred security company?
Oh, that was for the...
The community.
The community, yeah. So we're not talking about that?
No, we're not talking about that today. And you can see why I took it out of this contract, that anyone that had a quinceañera or a bar mitzvah, they would have to, you know, have these people be their security. That's just not fair to the other security services that might want to operate in town. So that's why I took that out of the contract.
I actually have a question about that. The community hall is the city's. It's not like the venue across the way, or Hargene's, that has weddings. I just want to make sure that regardless of who is the security company, that they have everything in place because they're protecting us when alcohol is being given out to whomever, to whatever age, because the security company is not watching that. Or we have people who are, have had too much alcohol and leave our facility, that we are liable for that. And I just want to make sure that we're covered by every means possible. And if, and I don't know where you guys stand on this, if Level One is the city's security company, that our, our facilities are covered.
So I believe that was a different action item for the City Council that was before you, I believe several months ago. And I wish Trish was here because she was the, you know, person that drafted it all. But that was a different, where there was three providers vetted on a list, and then that list was provided to the people who have these events at the community hall. And that's, I believe, the way that you resolved it several months ago.
I thought we voted them to be the first in line. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I did, I just want, I, sorry. I just want to make sure that our city is protected, not by somebody who leaves at 10 o'clock, because I only got paid till 10 o'clock, so I'm leaving. I just want to make sure that we're not liable.
So if that's, I don't know that this is the case, but if that's the case, we need to somehow have it in the contract that the renter pays until the, till the last table is folded up and the door is locked. You know, that's the way I look at that. That's the way I look at that. And I give, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to suggest that they, that they be there half an hour after the event is over to make sure that they pack up and leave safely.
So can I suggest that that contract be brought back then to you at the next meeting? Because that's really not on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
This contract is on the agenda tonight.
And that's all in the specifications and all the vetting of a new service agreement. So we'll bring that back.
Hello, everybody.
Some input? Comments?
I really appreciate the contract, and we get it going so I can get paid. You know, I don't have anything to say at this time. I think we're doing a great job. You know, I'm the most popular belief we are out there. We are doing what we're supposed to be doing. You know, Don, had a long conversation with him. In about 10 minutes, we got this whole contract thing worked out, which was a breath of fresh air. And I'm not trying to be, you know, disrespectful, but I mean, me and Don sat down probably twice, and in 10 minutes, we had everything worked out. Since stuff is not on the agenda, I don't want to bring that up, but I really hope we go forward with this. I think you guys have to ask me, and I'm here. Oh, wait, I do want to say something, I'm sorry. You know, when you guys do your special events, last year, and talking about the downtown events that all these folks have been bringing up to you and vetting, and I told Todd I would talk to him, too, is that make sure that when you guys, like when they're doing the praise and stuff, a lot of the sheriff's department are not capable of doing that because of their low numbers. And once that happens, I get a call from one of the commanders the night before saying, hey JT, can you release some of your couple guys so you can help with traffic control? So I just want to leave that up to you guys when they're doing their praise and stuff, that we have no problem helping, so.
Thank you for that.
I have a question, it may not be proper, but what are we doing about all the trucks that are going to Moner?
You know, Tony had it right when he said we should shoot their tires out, and I did it back that day.
Thank you, Tony.
You know, Mayor Flores, we're trying to, we do the best we can, and I've talked to the sheriff and the commanders over there and the public sergeants. And what we've done is when they come up to a stop sign, my guy actually pulls car over because it's a moving violation, and they'll go up to them and properly ask them to either back down the street or go out the way. What's going on is the GPS Garmin and stuff like that puts it here, puts the route here, instead of putting it out to 129 in depression. And what they don't realize is if you read that fine print on Garmin or whatever direction, it tells you what weight capacity you can come into the town with, and they're missing that completely. So we've actually been working with True Leaf and Earthbound Farms out there to divert some of these trucks to other directions. Of course, my guys, too, but there's really limited stuff we can do. But we do stop them, we do have them back up when we can, and, you know, they're usually pretty grateful because I think they would rather us talk to them to get a fine from the highway patrol or the sheriff's department.
Well, I think that's a great idea you just mentioned. We need to have you work with True Leaf and Earthbound, and maybe even ask them if they can put up a sign reminding these people as they leave their yard, trucks over so many tons are prohibited in San Juan, please go to Highway 101. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
So you don't have to end up doing that.
We're going to do it anyway.
I know, but...
So I don't get run over anymore?
Since Taylor just bought it, so, you know, let's get him while he's in the truck.
Exactly. And also, I've seen personally, you know, at the corner of First and North, one of those 60-foot trucks, one of the large ones and really long ones, they had to back up two or three times to make the right-hand turn, you know? And it's, the streets and such are just too narrow for them, or the situation is just too narrow.
I have backed them up.
Yeah.
I stand out in the middle of the road and back them up. They took, they took my electrical power line out.
And I also want you guys to remember when you think about these roundabouts, okay? How's the truck going to come around and turn them around or do stuff? I just want to throw that out to you.
They're not allowed here.
They're not allowed here.
So they hit the turnabout, turnabout, they're out of compliance.
Yeah. I want to talk about the traffic jam it's going to cause to get them out of there. I just ask that you guys keep it fair, only type of security services in the town, that everybody's, you know, got the same insurance as we do.
Thanks. Thanks, JT.
So we need, we need to make sure that we have minimum levels and that, you know...
We're doing the best we can, Don. We're going to turn them around.
So back to the, back to City Hall, to the community hall and the contract, so...
Right, exactly. We just need a minute.
Can we, can we agree to pay them what we owe them and come, okay, and come back and I just want to make sure that the city, that the community hall is ours and we're protecting ourselves.
So just real quick, because that's not really the topic.
Right.
We ran into a situation where they were unable to staff it. And so having only one choice wasn't enough because we ran the risk of having an event that was no security at all. So we have to have some depth in our team.
I understand that. And under 30 days notice that we're having an event is not realistic sometimes either.
Right. So that hall is booked every day between, every Saturday between now and January. So there's notice.
Now there is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion by the council? The possible action here is we provide direction to staff.
I think you're going to direct the city manager to negotiate that some keep the contract to the terms set forth here, and that would be...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, well, then the terror's in a motion to give direction to a city manager to deal with this.
Thank you. I'll second that.
John, second. Any further discussion? If no further discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You got your job to do, Doc.
Can I shake your hand and say thank you?
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you. Take it off.
All right, JT.
Mayor? Thank you very much.
Thanks, JT.
Thank you.
She's on the phone. I don't want to discuss that. Just my she's or other one of them, but I don't know.
The original thing behind that was...
That's a topic for another day.
...the sock shoes over the tire line, those people were dealers.
Oh, wow.
That's where it reached your case.
Thanks, JT.
Okay, D, adjusted development impact fees for accessory dwelling units and approved resolution. I guess that we're dealing with granny units? So staff report from City Manager Reynolds?
Thank you. This is another issue that came to Ed's attention before he left, and he was unaware, apparently, that there was some laws that were more current than the last time we amended our code. And so in review of those, we were struggling with the 600-square-foot provision in our current ordinance and the fact that we had a proposal for a 900-square-foot secondary unit. And we researched the, we researched the state laws on that, and 2016, several laws were passed because the state was taking action related to accessory dwelling units or secondary units to create a form of affordable housing. The city of Santa Cruz had come up with a template for a secondary unit, and you could, you could put that in your backyard with almost zero fees and zero parking and all these incentives to build these secondary units in existing homes to create more affordable housing in the cities. So along those lines, they created a legislation that overruled ours, allowing a secondary unit to be as large as 1,200 square feet. So the interpretation of the rules was first based on fixtures in the house. And in this case study, we had a home with 10 plumbing fixtures, and the accessory dwelling unit had eight, and so we were asking for 80% of the impact fees. And the table in the back shows us the ADU before 2016. If the single-family home was $28,000 in impact fees, we were originally proposing a fee for the ADU of 22.8, almost, you know, 80% of what that amount is. So consistent with the state law, we're asking that just the fee schedule be amended today, but eventually we have to come back as soon as we can and amend the whole secondary unit. What we're proposing is to get our fees in line with the state law, and if it were a 600-square-foot unit, be 25% of that $28,000 or $7,000. And this is in this particular example, we had a 900-square-foot unit, it would be 37.5%. So the fees change in relation to the size of the accessory dwelling unit. And the same is true if it were less than 600 square feet, the fee would be small. But the issue came up about lot lines and whether someone wants to put a 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit on a tiny lot, and that's where the need to change our whole ordinance in that regard. And Deb helped us with some research this afternoon, and Todd was brought into the loop. But for the time being, especially for this particular case study, and I believe they're here today, we're recommending that we first bring our fees in line, and then we'll come back with an ordinance for the council to get all of our secondary units and all of our laws related to that in line.
Public comment? Any public comment? Close public comment? Discussion by council? Any further discussion on this? If none, the possible action, the motion to approve resolution 2019 confirming the development impact fee schedule and its applicability to auxiliary dwelling units. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Leslie? Any further discussion? If there's none, we move forward. Call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Opposed? Attention, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, you ready?
E, approve resolution authorizing changes to the designated signers on the city bank accounts at Union Bank. Who? City manager.
The individuals holding the position of mayor, city treasurer, city manager are all check signers. The council approved my agreement, which included duties such as signing checks, but I have not been authorized to sign on the city's checks at this time. So this is simply a resolution coming forth to the council to take care of that formality.
Any public comment? No public comment, close the public comment. Discussion by council? No discussion, possible action, motion to approve resolution 2019, whatever number it is, authorizing changes to the designated signers on the city bank account at Union Bank.
I move it.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mary. Any other discussion? If none, move forward. All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now you can sign, Don.
Thank you. You got to go to Union Bank first and get the little...
To Hollister? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Get him back here.
F, approve resolution appointing Don Reynolds as a representative to Farsack Board of Directors.
So that's an alternative director to Trish, who serves on that board. Farsack is our joint powers insurance authority, our liability program, and when Trish is out, I would be pinch-hitting for her. And there's a resolution to memorialize and formalize that situation so we can send that up to Farsack.
Okay. Wait, we need open, open, open public. Public comment? No public comment? Hang on here, we'll get you to the public. Discussion by council. Okay, discussion by council. Okay, the possible action is motion to approve resolution 2019 accepting Don Reynolds as a representative of Farsack Board of Directors.
I think she moved it already.
We have moved by Don, Dan.
By Mary.
Mary, I'm sorry. Second by Dan. There's no more discussion? All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Don. Under discussion items, we have rules and regulations for cannabis facility. So say Planner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Once again, Todd Kennedy, your city planner. This relates to the item back on public hearings related to cannabis with the zoning text amendment. This one, however, is a second part of it, and it's on the discussion item because this is right now, we want to wait till next month after discussion with staff to, but we wanted to introduce this. This is the rules and regulations for cannabis, and they would be adopted by a resolution. So that way, the applicable rules and regulations are implemented. So that's what I'm here tonight for, to go ahead and just bring this to your attention on how it relates to the chapters that were adopted by the previous ordinances that have been passed by council. So that pretty much concludes my presentation tonight. Myself or city staff can answer any questions you may have tonight.
So these are the ones that Victor wrote. So, these are the ones that Victor wrote and that the subcommittee at the time approved, and I don't think the, this council has not reviewed them, so it was my suggestion to Todd to put them on. So, you know, they're lengthy and you have a chance to review them. If you have any questions, we can bring it back at the next meeting. I think they're ready to go, but, you know, also, Don, as a new city manager, he's going to have to implement these and put the process in place, so he needs to be ready. And I just wanted to add, so if you see here from the code, you have, we have submitted a city tax which passed, and the next thing would be the rules and regulations, which we could pass by resolution, but you'll still have to go back and repeal the ban on marijuana facilities in order to have the whole thing go forward. So, if, if, if these rules and regulations look good, you can tell us now or tell us later, but it'll be someplace in the, in the future where we'll have to put these on for approval, then put on the repeal of the ban, and that'll be the end of it then. And the ban will take two readings and then 30 days before it will be in place. Right, so then when that all happens, then if that's at the next meeting or the September meeting, then that's when staff will, will have to be ready to accept applications.
Gives me 120 days to figure it out.
So, how many pages is it?
The rules and regulations?
Yeah.
Are what, six pages?
I don't think they got all of it.
And then the application itself?
Can we access the copy of it?
Well, you can have my copy.
Great.
With all my comments and notes on it, if you.
That's good.
No, I was just, I was just going to ask if maybe somebody could give us a copy, a hard copy, so that we could, you know, read it and go.
And, and I realize that we had a subcommittee, but the subcommittee has already reviewed these? That's why I was, you've already seen them?
Yeah, we worked really hard on them.
There you go. Cool.
So, then we don't have to.
I would think we'd put in, like, a couple of letters familiar with them, but just by way of background, the city first set up the whole concept of cannabis, what we give. We made a decision in the council at that time to retain, they could go now as former Hollister's, the fellow Hollister's commander, that is a lobbyist and consultant. And he was working on the county's cannabis organs at the time and the city of Hollister's, and he just knows a lot about this stuff, so we retained him as a consultant. He worked with Devin Law and the council, first meeting in cannabis coordinates. And then the second step was the rules and regulations. And we did this to Chris Mayron and I, we're on the subject, and we worked on it with Victor a lot, and so he's been, he's been with us, so I would do all that, but he has been similar there.
Great. Thank you for the background. Thank you.
Maybe just answer.
No, I was just going to say I'd like to review it just to familiarize myself.
Sure.
I just want to, I just want to answer a question that just came up. I counted including the application, draft application, about 24 pages. That's how I counted here, so.
Okay.
But the application's about eight of those.
Thank you. Now, the, I'll see here, 7C is potential option to tax short-term room rentals.
Just real quick here, since it's getting kind of late, I, I didn't do a whole lot of research, past what I additionally did, but I'll kind of lay out my reasons for having a, for applying a TOT tax on Airbnb and similar businesses, short-term rentals. Number one, it levels the playing field. It puts them on an equal basis with Lial and Posada, or puts the, you know, they have to pay the same taxes as people at Lial and Posada. So, it puts them all on a level playing field, and I feel that that's important. I feel that we shouldn't favor one business over another. From my research, Airbnb has ways of paying the tax directly to the city, although there are a few jurisdictions where it happens where the Airbnb person, whatever that you want to call them.
Homeowner.
Yeah, homeowner or whatever, has to pay the tax to the city. I, I would say that, I have a list of cities and counties here. It's a long, that already do this. It's a long list. We would just be joining, I would say, the majority of cities in California. Instead of being odd man out, we'd be in the group. Plus, our city needs money for infrastructure and all kinds of dog parks and all, you know, just a million different little things that we're behind the curve on, so.
Is it the same 12 percent?
I think, yes, it is always, it's, so it's always the same. So, that, that's what I meant by a level playing field. And so, like I said, most of the time, the people who stay at these Airbnbs, they do, they're all signed up with their credit card on the Airbnb website, and they just go and stay there and put their reservation in, and it's billed automatically, and, and you have to kind of bug them from what I understand, but you could, but Airbnb can zap directly into our bank account.
So, we're not capturing any of that now?
No, no, we're not.
So, John, in your research, do you know you have to go to the ballot on that? Because our TOT was placed, was passed on the ballot, so I'm wondering if you have to.
I didn't, I did not read that. I read the Pacific Grove ordinance, and they didn't say anything, you know, I read the ordinance, they didn't tell me if it was on a ballot or not, so.
So, I'm, I'm not sure about that. I would have to research it, but there is a possibility that it's a general or special tax. I mean, we do, we adjusted that 12 percent by voter, the voters did that, so I'm just not certain about it.
So, I, I would just say, I, I'll name a few counties where this is, where this is applicable. San Benito County is not one of them for some reason. They're behind the curve also, but Amador, Marin, Madera, Butte, Calaveras, El Dorado, Humboldt, Mariposa, Es Nolo, Los Angeles, San Diego, all have TOT taxes on short-term rentals.
Oh, no.
Because, if I can ask, you, you said you found about eight available in San Juan Baptista, and, and when I looked, I found more around us than inside of us.
Yeah, we wouldn't get that, that one.
On the ranches.
Canyon and, a school road has a few.
One was a tent and a batting cage.
I saw that.
Wait.
So, what are, what are we doing this?
We asked the city attorney to research the process for us, and, and when she's ready to report that.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no other items? We have comments for the city council? Any comments?
Welcome. Thanks for staying this long.
Thank you. Two?
I just had one comment really about that I would like to be presented in the future if there's a chance to. It came up tonight, the old man, I was trying to get some top in the elements in front of the library. So, it's been a little bit of a trip there, but in my opinion, it's been wonderful, it's really, it's been very, very cool.
Counselor, there was a, a mention, a rumor of a contribution that the city received to repurpose, to retain it?
Oh.
I, I don't know. That's why I'm asking, you guys know that, Steve, but I didn't.
Yeah, I don't know.
And then all, all, all that, it's thirty years ago, they were shut, I don't know if the mission used to happen there. And then we brought it up here, from the new part station, they were going, and then that's, they just don't, they protected it all, so they can't go out there and, and remove them, and it's not any way that you can.
I actually know where they had put, it wasn't in the library, and then it was in the, the city library.
It, it wasn't in the yard for a while.
It was in the yard for quite a while.
So, we would, we would keep it hidden and then brought out for special events?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a really nice idea.
There's some money into the store, I think it will, it will repay the San Juan Baptista and go on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have our, see.
Yeah, it could be, it could be.
Mm-hmm. Are they ever going to?
Any other comments?
You know, I, I'd like to see us put something, I talked to Don about this, and I, I'd like, maybe Deborah, if, if you could research, if there's a policy that we can come up with where we require the owners of our beautiful buildings, some of them are starting to peel, the paint is starting to peel, and they're starting to look sad, some of them. Inaka came in and they paid for renovating that restaurant and doing all that work that they did, and then, yeah, and Eighteenth Peril is another one. They went in and they put a lot of money into that. So, I feel that, you know, some of our owners need to keep the buildings up so that, you know, that we get tourists that come in and it's inviting instead of looking at beat-up buildings. And then, it's commercial, yeah, most of them are commercial. They're all downtown on Third Street. And then, and then, look, Casarosa, it's, I, I'm hoping that it's in Esco, and it's going to get sold, but it's open to the elements, and when it starts raining again, it's going to get, it's, the same thing is going to happen all over again. So, I don't know if we can do anything about that, but I just wanted to mention that. And then the other thing is including maintaining the buildings. I think that people that own homes and have them boarded up, like we have over here on Second Street, there needs to be something that prevents somebody from doing that. There, you know, we talk about our housing element, you know, those two houses could be rented out right now, and, and it looks bad. It just looks bad.
Possibly used.
I don't know, and then the, the brewery that was, it was renovated and nothing ever happened with it. The paint, it needs a new paint job already. There are windows broken in the back of the building, and it's just, and the weeds, the weeds have still not been cleaned up.
The San Juan, we had two elderly ladies that fell, according to my report.
So, the weeds, you should tell the fire department, because remember, we just did the re-abatement on that?
Right, and I don't understand why.
So, we do have a ability for that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other input? Which one, boss?
Yeah, you mentioned that one too, Mayor.
Any, one else from the council? Any other comments? I'm looking forward to the farmer's market, so I guess, I'm working on it. The, the deal is that I'm working with an individual, the, the farmer's market would be on Sundays from 10 to 3, and it would be on Mariposa Street. It'd be one block, start off. You never know, if it gets bigger, we probably have to make it bigger, but that would be a good place, that people are coming out of the church, you know, taking use of it.
And finally, Don, thank you so much. You're a city manager. You did a great job.
Thank you.
City manager comments?
None.
None.
City attorney? The term of pardon, motion to adjourn?
I think motion to adjourn.
Paul's second.
We had a motion and a second. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now adjourned at nine, eight forty-five.